Okay, we'll call this meeting into order and stand for the pledge if you please.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, so the first thing on the agenda is the public hearing for the salt shed construction at the airport.
So our engineer-
It's about to order now, I guess.
Our engineer Kevin Smith is here to talk about the salt shed.
Yes?
Yep. Come on.
You're on.
A rather set of recently revised plans that reflect the state's latest revisions. Just right here. And basically, what the purpose of this meeting is, is to take a look at what the intent of the design is. There's been heavy involvement from the town, so I think we've gotten the intent down pretty well, considering what will be done for the project. So we're here at the end of Airport Road, and we're basically taking the existing salt shed's purpose and transplanting it into a 75 by 80-foot square building in this location. We're overlapping a piece of the community garden, which people might use as a placeholder, and will be south of the stockpile of grindings and other aggregate that we have on the site as well. It's going to be equipped, in terms of utilities, with power, but no other utilities than that. It'll have access from the front and also from the rear. No, from the front, excuse me. I'm thinking of a different project. That's about the scope of the project. I'm glad to take any questions about it that you might have.
What's the foundation around it?
Foundation of the building itself is going to be concrete blocks.
The Jersey barriers, you mean?
Sort of waste concrete blocks is what the intention is, yeah.
How high are you going to go?
It'll make for a push wall approximately six feet in height. Something like that over.
So I'm not an engineer, and I've never scooped sand, uh, salt or sand with a bucket loader. Would it behoove us to double that wall to make it twice as thick? Is that something we should do or something to consider?
Maybe the back wall you could.
To avoid problems in the future.
I mean, once the building's up, you could just put the extra blocks in the front of it. You might even want to build them a little higher in the back.
And I didn't, Kevin, I'm sorry, this came to me just a second.
That's something we can do after the building's put up.
After the fact?
Okay.
Joe, I've seen a lot of places where they've taken heavy stone around the outside of the perimeter, outside of the wall, wall that's moving.
Apparently, there's no reason to go right tight against the wall anyways. It's going to be peaked in the middle and just...
How high is it?
Six feet.
No.
No, the overall structure is... Whoops. No, no, that's fine.
Read it out, it looks so small, I can't see it.
Forty, forty feet, one and a quarter inch maybe?
Yep, forty feet, one and a quarter inch.
Are your glasses still on?
Look there. I'm impressed. We don't bring any trailers in there, all right?
Depends on who the contractor is, that state contractor, whoever we take pricing from, it may or may not, depending on the year. In the last couple of years, contractors that we've chosen to price in delivers by the tractor trailer, whereas some years, it's with just the triangle.
You just have to push it in further, that's all. You're not going to be able to dump the trailer in there.
Yep.
Not a 40-foot trailer, you're not going to be able to...
No.
You might get part of it off, but...
Yep. Yep.
Other questions?
What's the roof look like? Is it, I haven't really, is this a conical thing?
It's an open space truss.
Okay.
With covering.
How heavy is the covering?
I'm sorry?
How heavy is the covering? How thick?
How thick? Good question, I'm not sure of the answer.
It looks like one and a half inch. It says steel, one and a half inch.
I think that's the steel. Let me just take a look.
Steel truss?
Steel truss.
Most of those covers are guaranteed for 20 years anyway.
Let me make a note and be sure it gets on the plan.
Are there other questions or comments?
Go through the door.
Four, two, three, four.
One, two.
And just refreshing my memory, we're going to be using some of that milled from the paving as the base for this?
That's correct. I need to get that sample in order to find it approved by the state for use. I hear one of their specifications, but I'll see about, I have a driller coming in to Castle Town next week. I'll see about them taking a sample back and having it tested.
Come off the state road, and then we got to test it to see if we can use it. Makes a lot of sense.
We got to do a study on it.
Yeah, we have to do more studies.
So when we talk cost of this, or maybe that's, if I'm jumping ahead, tell me to stop, but it looks like we've got money that between the grant and everything else, is this all paid for?
It's, oh yeah, it's more than covered.
Okay, fine.
The plans that you see here come to 150, almost 152. We have almost 200 in grant funding.
Okay, so we have...
So yeah, we're more than covered on this one.
Because I saw this, when you put the contingency on to 152, you probably are...
Be close.
But we're good, we don't have to worry about coming up with new monies. Okay.
Did I just hear that right? No match?
Yeah, this was a no-match, Jeff.
Sweet.
Yeah, it is, that's kind of nice when you don't reach in your wallet.
I'm checking now, between the layers of nut blocks. Is there any rerun to tie them together in between them and set it in?
They're usually strapped together, so it's bolted into each of the faces to hold them together as opposed to, so that way you can use a discrete block, stack them and attach them.
Okay.
They're also wedged too, so they, when you come together, they...
That's right.
Kevin, do you need, do you know if the state, I should ask, does the state need a vote by the board to approve this plan?
No, I think it would probably be a good idea whether the state needs it or not.
Fair enough.
I think more importantly, the fact that the need was held is probably what's critical to that.
So you're looking for a motion to accept the design as presented? Sure. I'll make a motion to accept the design as presented.
Is there a second?
No second.
Any other discussion?
I assume that the location of this is fitting into the overall plan. Someday we'd be so fortunate as to have a public works building out there that it all kind of lays out in the plan.
Well, I would assume so, and the other end of the story is that anything can be built next to the salt shed. You know, we could make it, we can make it.
Yeah, I'm just talking about the logistics of, you know, getting around the site, and, you know, it's got to be planned out.
The original plan was that if a new garage was put up up there, it was going to go where the old hangar was.
Yeah.
Yeah, because the salt shed is up south of where the hangar is. It's in between the National Guard and where the old hangar was.
And Rod, we've been in touch with the Army Corps as well as the state. We're staying underneath that 10,000 square feet threshold, and we're going to get that whole area permitted, so that way in the next 10 years or so, when and if money does come on board, we're already ready to just, you know, pull the trigger and start building. So yeah, we've, thank you to the future.
Any other questions? We've got a motion on the floor. Do you understand what we're voting on? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Thank you.
You nailed us.
He's in favor, by the way.
We all set?
And we're good, and...
Can you send me some digital copies too?
Of course.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You get to go home early.
Hope you haven't got a tour.
All right, at that, that's the conclusion of the public hearing. If anybody's got any other questions that need to be asked. All right, so we will now go back to our regular meeting, and are there any amendments to the agenda? None for me. Nothing? Anybody? Jeff, nothing?
I'm all set.
Okay, approval of the minutes of September 29th, first.
So just a little background on this one. This is the hearing for the 1% option tax. There was a concern by Mr. Scott that he felt that some of his language didn't get included. Claire did talk to him, and we included some of that language into the minute.
I can't find where that is, or I got it, looked at it before. So he, you guys talked?
I went over to the house to visit with him. He got a phone call and had to leave. Came back the next day with this typewritten sheet. And I gave it, the original, to Joe.
So I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of September 29th with the, with Mr. Scott's additional information.
Wasn't here that evening, so...
Okay.
I'll second.
So that's essentially, we're just amending. I think we accepted that, and then we didn't accept?
We didn't accept the minutes. We tabled the minutes for that. And the only, now that we have a motion and a second, the only discussion item I'd liken that, where the last sentence on the document they had, which Mr. Scott pointed out, that the sales tax is, tax is a regressive tax, meaning it places a higher burden on low-income and elderly residents. It's, it's one where it's an opinion. When I read that statement, it read like it was fact, as long as it's, it's Mr. Scott's opinion, that's, I'm okay with that.
It's just what he said, and that's...
We went, and the next minutes when we talked about answering questions, I have something I want to add to that.
I mean, his last statement, I think, is a little bizarre. I guess that's the only way I can say it, because, yeah, it's going to be on low income, but it's, what about if we put it on property taxes? That's going to help, that's going to hurt the elderly worse than this 1%.
That was more of saying, I'm not saying one's right and one's wrong, but I says the other, the other side of the coin is regardless, there's going to be a burden on everyone, including low-income and elderly, on this one right here. I'm in the school and the camp that says a combination of some kind of general 1% option tax and general increase will probably make that impact a little less.
But yeah, and we're actually, we're just adding that on, we're not, it's not really arguable, it's just his, it's his opinion. Just so it's in there.
Yep.
Anybody understand what we're doing?
Mm-hmm.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, and now the minutes of October 6th, 2020.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of October 6th. Here's written.
Additions, deletion, oh, I need a second, I'm sorry. Second, someone?
That's the one I was, I missed.
Additions, deletions, corrections?
I had, under the town manager communication, when, on page two, first bullet, where Manager Guptur read aloud a letter from Neil Robinson in opposition to local option tax. I think that if we could move back on page one, is where we dealt with the public hearing on the open option tax. Even though it came, it's accurate, the minutes that it's here, it concerns the option tax here. And the thing I had, when I listened to the letter that was read, my interpretation was he's for the option tax, he's not in opposition of it, so I'm, I just wanted to bring that out. I could, I could be wrong.
It was kind of a backhanded sarcastic...
He was being sarcastic, but I took it...
I didn't think he was opposition.
I didn't think he was opposed to it, and I don't know what anyone, I just wanted...
No, and I agree, I talked to Neil, and he talked me through his letter, and he is in support of the local option tax. I was going to bring it with me just to show the board again, but unfortunately, I recycled it. So that, yeah.
That's the only comment.
So you want to move it to, I don't know, I mean, it came in at a different time, but...
Okay, and you don't have to, I just, I just knew it tied into the, it's the whole, all I'm interested in is the taxpayers have as much information as possible so they can make the decision how they want to go on the local option tax, quite frankly. So I'm good with that.
Can we amend it to support though? Is that okay?
Yeah.
Because he does support the...
He is, he supports it.
So with that amendment, you're okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Second is okay? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Aye.
Thank you. Not getting up to Sheldon Road as quick as it usually does. Yeah. Okay, we'll move on. John Galvin is here with a rescue squad update.
Evening. I think everybody knows me, anybody doesn't, my name's Sean Galvin. As of the middle of March, I took on the role of EMS chief for Fairhaven Rescue Squad. Everybody's aware, there's been some problems there over the past couple of years, so what I wanted to do was give you an update on what's been happening since I've been in this role and the direction we're going. I also had an idea that I wanted to share with the board at the end of this, if I could. The finances, obviously, were in pretty rough shape, they still are in rough shape, but we're making progress. We went to an outside biller, hired a professional billing company. Medical billing is its own animal, and it's constantly changing, and we needed somebody that keeps up on the coding and billing things, and it has made a difference, and we've been bringing in a little more money. The other thing, they were not doing non-emergent transfers. That's where the money is. When people think that you respond to 911 calls and it covers the bills, it doesn't. You don't get paid for all of the billies you get, you don't get paid for all the responses. Straight-up 911 calls will not carry the squad. So the concern about doing transfers is that if you're on a transfer and a 911 call comes in, there's nobody here to do the 911 call. So we developed a plan, implemented a plan, that we started transfers, and when I talk about transfers, if people aren't aware, I'm talking about like people that get released from the hospital, but they can't go back to a nursing home or their home in a car, they go by ambulance. And those are billed, you get, almost always get paid for all of those as comparison to a 911 call, because it's planned, the insurance company already approves it before we go pick them up. So there's more money in transfers than there is 911 calls, if there's enough transfers. So to, I was concerned with not being available for a 911 call, because the objective of the whole squad is to provide emergency services. But the fact is, if we don't do transfers, we won't be there for 911 calls at all, because it's not going to be viable. So we started a plan to do them when Polkney Rescue was open, so we had, likely would have a backup ambulance. We provide mutual aid to them, they provide mutual aid to us. And we also implemented a plan where the on-duty crew would reach out to the rest of the staff. We have the means of sending one message, goes to everybody in the department, need two to come in for a transfer. If it's a short notice or nobody comes in, then the on-duty crew takes it, puts out a message, we need two to come in for station coverage. Probably 90, 90-plus, until this last month, we were covering, people were coming in. This last month, we had a couple times where people didn't come in. What we ended up doing a few of these times is one person was able to come in, not enough for a crew, so we called dispatch and said, tone us out, we'll send one person as a first responder, so they would, somebody would start getting some kind of help, but tone out a backup ambulance. So we would get initial care going and then have another ambulance come. We're trying to build the staff up, we've hired a couple more people. If I can get a couple more local EMTs working, I'm pretty confident that we'll be able to call people in and cover things the way we'd like to cover them. But obviously, the finances, if we don't do it, we're going to be out of business. A lot of people don't understand what the per capita rate is. People hear the term per capita, it's on your ballot when it's time to vote, a lot of people don't know what it is. So basically, for those of you who don't, it costs this much to run the ambulance. This is what goes out. The money that comes in is from billing, from the subscriptions and from donations, and that adds up to this much, which is much lower. The difference between the money coming in from those three sources and the money it costs to operate, if you take that amount of money, divide it up by the population of the communities we serve, that gives you the per capita rate. One of the problems that we had was when it was a volunteer squad decades ago, they were billing insurance companies, and they were banking that money, they built a pretty good nest egg. They went to a paid department, and the money going out was more than the money coming in, because they were just billing insurance companies. They never raised the per capita rate for over 10 years, is my understanding. It was set at $10 until last year. If you run the numbers and do the math, try to do a budget now, it's very difficult, because they closed their doors for a few months last year. The best guess we have, you're pushing closer to $40 per capita would keep us level. Right now, we're getting 20. If, what they had done, did over, for about a decade, is instead of raising the per capita 2% or 3% every year, they were taking money out of the reserves to carry things and not raise the per capita. By the time I stepped in, the reserve's gone. It's not there. So if they had done that, if you figure 3% inflation per year for 10 years, on $10, that's $30, plus the 10 is 40, and that's landing right about where the numbers look like they should be right now to be viable. That's not set in stone, there's a few things we can do to maybe help. Getting into more transfers would potentially help. If we bring more in from a transfer path, then we would be building the income and the difference between what's coming in and the, and the operating cost would be less, therefore the per capita rate would be less. So we're working on that. We're trying to build relationships with nursing homes and other medical facilities and get some more transfers going. Another key to that is bringing in some more staff. It did hurt us that the college isn't operating at the full capacity. We usually have a couple EMTs that work at the college, that go to college, college students. You know, you can be an EMT at 18 years old, we had a couple 20, 22-year-olds, but they're not here right now. And we have a couple employees that will go to Middlebury College. They can't work because of Middlebury restrictions. We have a high school teacher, we have a teacher that works at Middlebury College, they can't work because of the pandemic. So, and then we had people going on military orders. One nice thing about that is because of that, I was able to apply for some FEMA loans, and that's helped some. We got the payroll protection loan, that helped. So we're doing better than we were three or four months ago. If you look at the bank account, it's slowly climbing, but if you look at the entire numbers and do it by month, we're still not out of the woods by any means. And so my plan is to put together a solid, accurate budget, and start educating people and start sharing it with the board before it's time to vote, and so everybody can make an informed decision. And that brings me to an idea that I had, and this, short-term may affect the per capita. I was looking at grants, and I found the SAFER Grant. I don't know if anybody's familiar with that. It's, the SAFER Grant comes out almost every year, and it basically funds full-time positions in emergency services. It was designed for the fire departments, but they earmark some money for EMS. And it depends how they roll it out, they do it different ways, different years. One year, I believe, they paid for a full-time position or a few full-time positions for three years, and then you had to guarantee you're going to maintain it for three more years. Another time they rolled it out, they paid 100% of the salaries benefits, the whole cost, for the first year, 75% the next, 50%, and so on, until you had to take it over. The problem that the town manager discovered for me, helped me discover, is that it's for municipalities. We're a nonprofit, so we don't apply. I got thinking about how I worked at the firehouse for 31 years. I was a state employee, but we were federally funded. The feds paid the state, the state paid us. I was kind of wondering, could the town apply for this grant and put municipal employees in my building? And then when the grant runs out, we would pay them as if we pay them now, but we would pay the town, and the town pay them. I have some concerns, and I would expect you would too. For one, if it rolled out in the manner that it was a three-year commitment, and then you had to maintain it for three years, if I was in your seat, I'd be going, I might consider it, but I'd be looking real hard at it, and I'd want to see the finances, because what happens if we go out of business? Are you on the hook for three years? I don't know. If it was percentages that got lower each year, I'd be more apt to look at it. I also would be concerned if I was in your seat with liability. What happens if one of these employees kills somebody in the back of a rig, does something stupid? I think the answer to that is good insurance. Concern from my end is, I don't want them working for you, flat out. It's, this board may be, may be good, but who's going to be here in three years? I don't know. I don't want, I don't want the control of the employee to be gone. What I would like to see is they work for the Board of Directors for Fairhaven Rescue. And you folks have a voice on there, you appoint somebody for that. It isn't just, just, you know, here, you pay them and go away. It's, there is some control there, but there needs to be, if we do this, a well-thought-out contract, I would think, year to year, and if it doesn't work well, the next year, we don't do it. But if you folks aren't interested, I thought I'd talk to West Haven and Benson and Hubbard and see if they may be interested. One big benefit I could see to doing this is, we have a hard time getting EMTs. You can make more working at McDonald's. You really can, and there's a lot of responsibility. I would love to see this be a good job, and by doing this, they may be able to get involved with like a municipal retirement. They could get involved, you know, we have insurance, but maybe yours is better, I don't know. But I'd like to make it a job people would want to have and try to draw in decent people. And I wouldn't mind if we do end up doing a grant, writing it for my position, because I don't want to do it. I'm supposed to be retired. You know, I took this on because it needed to happen, I was on the Board of Directors there, and I'm not going to jump ship on them. I plan on staying until we can have a smooth transition into something, you know, somebody that would be really good at this, and hopefully better at it than I am. But if we could write a full-time position for a EMS... But if we could write a full-time position for an EMS chief, that would be the ideal and from my point of view. And then maybe we could draw in a quality and professional manager. But I don't know if it's a good idea or not. I don't know if it's something you guys would just want nothing to do with, or I thought it was at least worth the conversation.
I'd like to talk about it, but I think it deserves more than a couple of minutes now. And a little, you know, and obviously a lot more research.
Oh, absolutely.
I will tell you that my initial concern is, we got burnt with the cops grant. In that we had to, we had to take on a police officer for longer than we wanted to. And we ended up having, everybody got used to that police officer, so that position, so now we have that extra position. So there are some hurdles.
Oh, absolutely.
And, well, there's a lot to talk about. And there's no need to get into it now because there's a lot to talk about.
The biggest thing is, you want the town to support private organizations.
That would be the, that would be our, yes.
We give them money every year. In that fact, we gave them an extra $25,000, I think last year, before that, because they bought it, it went from $25,000 to $50,000.
Which, that was a question I was going to ask too. Your budget shows the same $51,000.
Yeah, it was, the per capita, I think, went from $10 per capita to $20 last year.
The $20, right. So you're staying at that, at this point?
That's what it is right now. I don't know what we're going to be able to do. We're just getting into our budget here. My intent is to provide all the information I have and this is what it is. You know, I don't like it either, I really don't.
I mean, at this point, it's saying your request in $51,000, so unless that changes between now and the middle of January.
Right.
We've only received a few petitions, so anybody that hasn't sent something in, we just put flat for now, just to, just as a marker to see where we're, as we move through.
But we haven't put anything to the town. I wanted to get accurate information along with it. And I don't know, I don't know what the answer is, but I know that what's been happening doesn't cut it, it's just not going to carry it. That $10 per capita for over a decade, I wish they had, no, doesn't matter. This is where we're at now and this is where we're going forward.
So, just so you guys know, and you need to get it into us as soon as you can, at this point, it's $51,000.
Right.
Not just as a placeholder. But that can change, it's just.
Yeah, I know. I'm hoping, I'm hoping we can build revenue elsewhere, you know, this, the membership drive historically was bringing in about $6,000 a year. The biller that we hired took over that role for us and brought in about $16,000. So they did much better. Next year, we're talking about doing like a two-tier, maybe do like a premium membership when, I don't know, have people stop and get their blood pressure checked, have, you know, come put the car seat in for you, or install a smoke detector, whatever, you know, something that doesn't cost us more than our time, but that might also help bring in some. The, I think the key is transfers. That's where the money is. The money is not, in 911 responses, you don't make money. Not that it's supposed to be a money-making business, but you want to stay viable. And by all means, you really want to try to build it so you can pay the staff a reasonable amount of money, that's not a livable wage. People doing it aren't doing it for the money. I did an interview the other day with somebody hiring and I said, if you're doing this for the money, I don't want you working here because you're not very smart. You know, because it's, if you're doing it for the money, it's the wrong reasons. You know, it's a good part-time job for somebody who wants to give back to their community and get a little something for their time. But, like I said, the EMT basics are making $14 bucks an hour and you can make more than that starting at McDonald's. So, the crew we have right now though, I'm telling you, I'm so impressed with them. They're all pulling in the same direction, they know the situation we're in, they're working hard to put out good, quality care. They're critiquing all the calls and making improvements all the time and it's doing very well in that regard. One, the biggest problem is funding.
Well, let's, let's set up a time that we can talk about this in depth with some numbers, or at least, you know, fleshed out how the grant would work. And, you know, there's a, there's a ton of questions I have, I'll, you know, I'm more than happy to talk to you about it beforehand, so you get some answers, but.
Sure. But. Just, I'm reaching, you know, I'm reaching outside the box, trying to find some solutions here. And my thought is, if we can get the feds to pay some salaries, then that would affect at least for the first year or two, the per capita rate, because we'd be putting out that much less in salaries. So that's where my mind is going, is how can we do this? So, I don't know. But, do we have any other questions or concerns I could answer? I'll give it a try, if I can, I'll tell you I don't know.
At this point.
No, I think, I'm only hearing good things, you're doing a good job.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sean.
I appreciate your time.
Thanks, Sean. Tell everybody we appreciate it.
We'll do. Thank you.
Five minutes for public discussion. Going once, going twice. Department heads, department head reports. Aaron, you seem to be the department head in question.
I've got a report on the Scottville Road. We have completed the grant work up there and submitted all the paperwork for reimbursement. They have received that. I was just waiting for their final response on all of that. Been spending some time getting the equipment ready for the impending weather. Over the next couple of weeks, we're going to get out and try and get all the, going to get all the roads rated before winter does come come, and we can get those roads shaped up nice. Tomorrow, on the water side, South Main Street, just below, north of the railroad tracks, where we're digging up the water main, over on the hill there, trying to figure out what is leaking there. We have a strong spot of what we're looking at to dig down and hopefully repair that. Of the plant, the guys have been working with electrician to fix some of the ultrasonic heads that measure the flow going out of the plant, of the water. So those ultrasonic heads measure the flow on each side of the filter beds to see the water going out and it then sends the message to the chemical feed pumps for the chlorine and such, to make sure it's putting the right amount of chemicals in the water so we're not over or under dosing. They seem to be very happy with the electrician they found. Got those things straightened out and they're acting much more precise than they had been, so. Sewer end stuff, Annie and myself and the operators on the plant and Pete Laramie, been keeping in contact and working on the plant upgrade. A few more minor things we've been discussing over the last couple of weeks. I'm going to assume the 90% drawings are pretty close to complete and hopefully we'll start dealing with a review on those. Very happy with the progress we've made with that. Thursday, the Adams Street pump station, we've been talking about the upgraded electrical system there and such. We have a guy coming from Trombly Electric to help us size out, to properly size out a standby generator for that facility, so we know it'll fit that. And we'll get some pricing to be able to put in with the wiring up or the electronics upgrade for that. So we have something to effectively show you, the boards can discuss it, so. That's all I have on my notes for now.
Questions? There would be a lot of questions in a little while.
Manholes, what do you mean? You haven't tuck, you haven't done the one, put a self-main.
Self, one on the other self-main would be whenever we patch up that water leak ditch that we have.
I'll go to one on Gannon Street, that's a nasty one.
North end?
The one that went into the high school.
That was, should have been cold patched the other day with the other ones today. They missed it. All right, we'll get that.
It wasn't, they're assuming it was.
All right, they might have missed out, or missed out, there was another one that they were caught up on. We'll put that on the list.
I see you put some cold patch in front of Mr. Prinkowski's house and a couple off through there, that was nice.
When you do, when you do the one in the south street, you want to cover that one further up, the one at the end of the construction part.
On pink. One up.
Yeah, our place up there, just before you get the legion.
Yep, that one's done.
It is done?
Yep.
So pretty low. I don't think they filled it, but I'm not going to say they did or didn't, but.
I got it. I intentionally hit it every time I go through there.
Covered it in, they filled it in.
Level five.
I'm looking for noises when I do.
Shut up there, fill it through in the cattle truck and shit.
Did we hear back from, and I don't want to sound like a broken record on that sinkhole that's starting in front of Peoples, where it looks like that we thought it was, it might be D-Trans versus us, or?
You know, I never heard back from the state.
Because that, that looks like it's continuing to sink and.
We had a broken water main there.
Yeah, and we fixed a broken water main and it looks like our repair patch just keeps sinking down.
If I can hit, if I can hit B-Trans again and see what they're up to.
To see if they, if D-Trans will fix it, that'll be great. If it won't, well then we, somehow I'll have to.
About two weeks left, I'm going to answer them for.
If we rip that up for, to fix the water line, is that our responsibility to patch it back up?
I figure it's free to ask, Jeff.
Right, I think they're going to make this fix.
I, no, I prefer they did it, but.
Yeah, me too.
It's our water line.
Right, because that smashing of the trucks over, the vibration can't help our water line either.
Well, that's true. That is true.
That was my question also about the one that's leaking on South Main Street. Do you think that could have happened when they were compact and they were?
So under the railroad track itself, it's sleeved, so.
The vibration that they're doing could have affected the line.
Possibly.
So, because it's just, they did a lot of compacting there.
Yeah. Well, we also throw into the question of the water line being below the railroad track every time that goes by, you know, you can feel that railroad, that those cars going by whiz away, so. The determination might, yeah, that might definitely have an effect on it, but to say that's exactly what happened would be of my favor.
What's the water, I mean, how old is the water line going through there?
That water line is 1989.
Doesn't need to be that bad. Any other questions, Brian?
Okay, we'll start out with just a little bit of communication. Our neighbors, the town of Benson, are requesting a hearing with the Board of Selectment at the next Select Board hearing to discuss law enforcement. This letter comes from Guy Carlton or Charlton? I don't know how he says it.
Charlton.
Charlton?
Same guy we told Noel last time.
Yeah. So somebody will be in next, I don't know if it'll be Guy or not, but somebody will be in to meet with the board. Some communication we've sent out. We're sending a letter to the gentleman that owns the house that burnt down, I think on Second Street, Mr. Cieros, just reminding him that he only has six months to demo and take care of that, or to take care of that building in one way or another. We're also sending a letter to Ms. Reed, who has done some unpermitted repairs or improvements to her home. And she has chickens. You're not allowed to have chickens. A little bit from the police department. They're still holding public hearings on the dispatch fees. No movement right now on that. Adams Street, that gentleman has been ticketed again. He's reached out to the chief to talk about, talk about the fees and see what he can do to not have to pay those. Just like everything, just like all the other tickets we've dealt with, it's if you clean up your mess, then you won't have to pay those.
He stopped by my house Saturday, John sicked him on me.
Yeah, my call.
And made it sound like he'd made great progress. And I said, well, if you made great progress, we're not going to, you know, we're not going to stick you with $500, but, you know, it's got to be progress and it's got to be, you got to, the place has got to look like something, you know, you're hurting everybody else's property values. So I finally got down there today to look and there's not a lot of progress. So he needs to, he needs to do a lot more to make, to impress me anyways, I'll tell you. And I'm sure his neighbors.
He's got a piece of property, he put all that stuff on. He needs to find the property somewhere, a piece of property.
He keeps saying he's gonna, he's got, he's got a possibility, but he doesn't, it's not there.
It can't be that for a year.
I know.
I bet it.
He's got a lot of work to do there. Sorry, I didn't mean to take your time.
I mentioned it, it's been probably two months that I was doing tax sales. That's actually been put on hold for right now. I'm hoping to get back into it in the next month. It's just we've, I have personally been swamped. So we'll get there, slow rolling right now.
Where are we with tax, I think, where we at with numbers?
The number has been floating at about 20, 25. Some people, as soon as we send out the letter, they'll pay, they're repeat offenders.
What's the, what's the cash number, I mean?
Oh, I don't have it and I can get it.
Well, next time, next time.
Yeah, I don't have it in my head. The new fuel tank is in, the old fuel tank is sealed. Good or bad, depends on how you look at it. We did find a little bit of fuel in the soil around the old tank. Personally, I think it's good that we pulled that tank out and found the problem before it turned into a brownfield site here at the town hall. I have a geologist who is working with the state to determine how many borings we need to do and then if they want to just do sampling from here for a few years out. She didn't seem real concerned, but I'm not really hanging my hat on that till we, till we hear from the state.
You're, just to clarify, you're thinking that was more of an overfill than a leak, correct?
Yeah, that's, thanks, Jeff. That's what the young, the young lady, the geologist said. She said it's kind of reminiscent of somebody had overfilled it, maybe once or twice, and the fuel went up and then rolled down the pipe. So then it just pooled up around the tank. So that's, that's kind of what she was thinking, but the numbers were elevated enough to where she had to report it. And that's, surprisingly, that's all I have for you right now.
There is no old business. Seems hard to believe. Errors and omissions for new business. So, old business.
Okay, errors and omissions. This goes back to what we've been seeing over the last few meetings, because the state bumped back the deadline for the homestead declaration form. Now, since the grant list is finished, the only way we can make updates is to have the Board of Selectment approve them. We have three homes that are, had filed their homestead declaration a little late and now we need to make that change to the list.
Can we do them all at once, or you want to do them separately?
The motion, it looks like you're recommending to do them all at once?
You can do them all at once, as presented, as long as we give the names of the property owners, so that way we're, it's clear on who it belongs to.
Let me make that motion. I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the errors and omissions certificate as presented to adjust the homestead declaration for the properties of John Adams, Bernard Greener, and Jeffrey Jackson.
Second.
Is that Bernard Janier?
Yeah, I just, G R.
Yeah, that's just Janier here though.
Okay, so there's an R in there, that's why I was wondering, huh? Okay, Bernard Janier, makes more sense.
And Jeffrey Jackson?
Yep.
You're a big French guy. Is there a second?
With a G?
I second it.
Yeah, with a G.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Do we all sign this? No, I don't know.
I think you all do sign it, it's on the backside. There you are. Right next to the listers.
Oh, yeah. Good. Kinda big, I don't know why you'd invite me. Okay. Fuel bids.
Yep, fuel bids came back. Yep, it should've been on the table in front of you. Champlain Valley Fuels is a low bid this year with a dollar forty-five per gallon.
That's pretty good.
Make a motion that we accept the fuel bid from Champlain Valley Fuels for a dollar forty-five per gallon.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Jeff?
Yep, aye, I was slow on my mute button.
Okay. So, Champlain Valley will have our fuel.
Uh, sewer abatement request. Yep, so we had four abatement requests, two for hot tub filling, uh, two for gardening. They, the request, the request came in to me just as the back, as the backstory. In our, in our policy, there's nothing that says the town manager can abate hot tubs, hot tub filling or water use for gardening. So, I brought it to the Board of Selectment.
Did they have numbers?
Oh... One, two, two people did, two people did not give a specific request.
Yeah, but did they have the numbers from the meters?
Oh, no, they did, nobody provided readings.
How were we supposed to do anything?
I don't think we even act on them. You can't, if you have no, if you have no idea what, they're guessed, they're gonna guess what to use. Anytime I fill the zone for something or the pond the first time, I have to have the numbers off the meter in order to get a, you know, have a reduction on it.
Yeah, it makes it hard and, and some of them, just one young lady says, "I used, I used a lot watering my garden, I want a reduction." It, it doesn't even give you anything to really work with, so...
They don't have the numbers, there's no way you can give any kind of abatement anyways. That's my feeling.
I gotta agree. If you wanted to take the time during the summer to, to check your meter every time you watered the garden...
Date it, date it and check it.
What happened to the idea of putting the, the, a meter on an outside spigot?
I don't think that went anywhere.
It was just, just an idea.
Is that something that people could do?
At their expense?
Be an easy way to keep track of it?
I think...
I have no idea what that would cost.
I think, I think it's one, something we should be discussing around if getting our hands on it.
An option to do for...
But my, my question is more for, for, like, Jay or Bob, who've been on the board longer than I have. That, when I look at the sewer ordinance and it says, and for when you want to appeal your, your bill, the process is that you, you go through a process that says you basically get ahold of the Dev and Joe and they do their thing and they, but then after that, they can come to this board. And so, two, two things concern me, just sitting here nodding your head and saying, "No." Uh, I, I wanna, I wanna see what it is they're saying. I, I'm not making a decision based on information right now. So, if they didn't give us information, okay, that's an easy one to, as, as Jay would said, but I, uh... If, if this is the final step in the process of their appeal process after they've been told, "No," I was kinda surprised they're not sitting here talking, saying, "Here's the reason why." And I, and I can't see I can make a decision in their favor without having something more...
Well, yeah, that's, I mean, if I was gonna ask for an abatement, I would have what I thought I used. And I would have something to back it up. I don't, you know, how, if that's the case, everybody's coming to us for an abatement with a guess. And we just can't, I don't think we can do that. Or shouldn't do that anyways.
So, what you're looking for from us?
You can just choose to not act, which is fine too. It would be, I know the abatement policy was, it should've been on the parking lot, but it didn't copy over. I'll put it back there for the next meeting. It would make both my life and Bev's life remarkably easy if this was a clear, if it was clearly delineated. You know, this is what you get money for and this is what you don't get money for. And then we don't have to come to the board every, every meeting and say, "Well, they didn't, they watered the grass." You know, it's, at some point, I feel that it's... You can say you used your water for anything and that you want an abatement because you didn't use it in the sewer. It's her, house washing, boat washing, I filled up my camper, the list could go on endlessly. It would be nice if the policy was a little more straightforward, just something usable.
Well, why don't you, to kick it back to you guys, give us something to, to think about. I mean, I... If somebody is that organized, it, it impresses me, cause I'm, I'm absolutely not that organized, but I can't imagine us doing anything unless somebody's got specifics. I turn the water on at six o'clock on Wednesday and six o'clock on, you know, Thursday and Saturday morning and it was on for an hour and it used X amount of gallons every time. That's the only way that we could even consider it.
Right, I mean, I, I always, when, when I look at these right here, I think like water in the garden. Well, if I took a five gallon bucket and I took ten five gallon buckets and watered my garden, if it was a big garden, and I did it so many days, I, I can do the math and I can come up with, I, I mean, I may not agree to, to that, to allow it, but I'm, I, I at least understand what the person is asking for.
But that same person could say, instead of they use five, they could say, "I use seventy."
Right, I mean, there is a, there is a...
That's when you don't have the numbers. There's no way you can do it.
It's fair to, they gotta be fair to us.
So, we all, go ahead, Jeff.
Well, if, if they have meter readings to support what they're saying on the days, can we verify those with the new meters? Can we look back at the days and the months and double check that they were close?
We can, but it's just not a matter of driving by. Then, at that point, to get the daily logs, you actually have to go into the house and, and use the, the reader on the meter itself.
Oh, so we would have to do that every day? That's, that's uncomfortable.
Not, not every day, but like, once a month?
Yes, but, yeah, the, it's possible, but is it, anything's possible, but is it feasible? Like, that's a lot of labor.
I'm not, it's practical. Not sure it's practical, I just wondered if we could verify those numbers at, at all.
Yeah, we, we sure can. We can go back and look at daily use and we could tell you how much you used on every day for back for, I, I don't know how long it keeps it, but, yeah, it, it's possible.
My, my other concern is for people who've been told it's being brought to this board for some, so we all have some kind of response. Is, are we, is the response gonna be, we have decided we do not have enough information to make a decision and if they would like us to reconsider, they need to come back?
With numbers.
With, with, with some numbers.
They can't do it now because they don't have the numbers. How do they come back with a meter? Well, I mean, it's, pretty cut and dry, either you have the numbers or you don't.
If they had them, I mean, I think that's what Glenn's saying, if you had the numbers, maybe we'd look at it.
And the only reason I'm, I'm saying, I don't know what they, what they've done to this point right here. I, I might try to take that the wrong way, Joe, it's just that what have they said? That because in this process, the way I read the ordinance, in this process, we're, we're a separate step or that's after when they say, "Okay, I've been through Bev, I've been through Joe, I don't like my answer. Select Board, I would like you to look at the information again and make a ruling." And I don't feel I've got enough information in front of me to have a decision one way or the other.
Yeah, so, so again, two people did, two people didn't give any request and provided no information. They just said, "I want, I want an abatement."
For those reasons.
One gentleman said, "I used three hundred and fourteen gallons." But he didn't provide any kind of, "I started on this time and then my reader, my meter reading said this."
But with that one right there, would it, and again, I'm just asking to say, "Okay, can you give us some more detail around what, what makes you..." To get us comfortable with, what's the three hundred and fifteen gallons? Tell, tell me how you got there.
What's three hundred and fifteen gallons?
I, I don't...
Not very much.
No. It's four dollars and twenty-one cents.
Yeah, right, we're not gonna write a check for it. If he wants, I'll give him the money. Yeah, I, yeah, it's... By the way, I filled my hot tub Saturday.
Four hundred, four dollars and twenty-one cents.
I think we're saying that...
I see no action.
I'd say, just tell them that, just make sure that they're, they're communicated to in saying that we don't have enough, we don't have enough information to make a decision.
Verification.
Yeah, enough verification, yeah.
So, that, so that they will go back? What I, what I'm sensitive to, I'm hearing more and more that when a complaint about sewer comes to this board, it falls on deaf ears and I just wanna make sure we're not out of hand just saying, "No."
That's just not true.
I know it's, but, but I'm saying, it doesn't matter whether, if that's a perception.
There hasn't been one person that's come in here and asked for an abatement that could show us meter readings. Not one person.
I...
The only time, the only time that we have is when there's been a broken water line and the water went in the cellar and they, they could tell by the, by the meeting, the readings. We have, we have nothing to go on, but why do you want, why do you...
They have a bit of responsibility for it.
I'm not, I'm not advocating we make a decision on the floor, I'm just saying, we are not very consistent. I believe when we sit here, we've had some people come in and we've said, and they haven't had meter readings, but we said, "Okay, let's take this off."
No, we haven't.
If you've filled the swimming pool or you've put some, you think you had X amount of dollars, well, I, I disagree with you. But I, I believe that we need to clean up this whole thing before, or we're gonna be constantly talking about...
I agree with you there.
Abatement sewer all the time.
But we have never, we have never given an abatement that I can remember that we didn't have real numbers to deal with.
I, I can go back and show you minutes from a minute.
I guess you're gonna have to, cause I don't...
Okay, I, I, cause it was right at the same time we did the gaze, the personal, the swimming pool, that we, we, we just said, "Well, let's just go with this." There were no real numbers and...
Okay, well, I'd like to see that, I don't remember that.
I'll go and pull it out, the minutes from now.
But it would, like, like everything else though, if, like what we do in Town Hall, if there is a leak, we're more... This is not what the board gets to see, but, and, and sometimes folks get grumpy with the personnel in Town Hall. What you don't hear is when we do help people. And a vast majority of people who come in and say, "Look, I had this water leak, it just, can you just do something?" And there is a, there is a way we can help them with that. And you guys don't see that, but a lot of people do get help. It's, it's things like this... Yeah, and, and, well, there, we have a policy for it. But things like this where it says, "I watered my garden." There's just no policy for us to react to and even the board, you guys can do what you want, but there's no policy for you to react to either. So, I'm just saying, it makes it hard on all of us, I think that's why we keep coming back to this.
I think the, the basic idea is to get a policy.
It is to go back and...
And to get, get the water and sewer, it didn't a policy, it should be in the water and sewer regs, so we're not dancing this dance all the time.
Yeah. Okay, I will respond to those folks and, and let them know again.
All right. Scotch Hill Brewery. More beer. Water Connection. Okay, what's up?
So, the brewery, they came in, I, I received an email from, I guess you'd call it engineer, long trail engineering.
Yes.
They're requesting an average daily flow of one thousand five hundred and four dollars.
One thousand?
I'm, gallons, daily flow gallons. Our fee structure sets this up at two dollars a gallon for a one-time fee, sewer fee. Again, this is like the, the watering your garden, I don't have the ability to abate this. So, the, the owners come in and they would like to talk to the board.
My question is, there's been a two-bedroom apartment that's there in that building forever. There's been a, a one-apartment building, or one apartment, one-bedroom apartment in that building forever. How many times is somebody gonna get charged for this? So, this, that should be ongoing when you, when you, but there's no reason for that bathroom, those bathrooms are in there. They've already been taken care of. I mean, why are we charging them again? I can understand the brewery part of it, because they're gonna be using more water for making the beer and stuff. But the parts of those bathrooms, that shouldn't even be there, because it's already, it's always been there.
Is this a combination of all this together?
That's a combination with two, two apartments, one-bedroom and two-bedroom apartment.
They've always been there.
Yeah, I, it seems to me that, that the idea of the connection fees was for something new.
And it's not. Nothing is new.
No, everything's there, everything's...
Everything is existing.
I mean, the brewery would be...
Everything is there, it was same way it was when we had the dairy.
But there's no, okay, so change of view. But nothing has been added or changed. I mean, everything's existing as far as water coming in and water going out.
There's been no new lines brought into the building.
We're basically paying to then pay for our water.
Same lines. I get, yeah, I get what you're saying.
Yeah, wasn't the, and I was trying, I agree with you, Jay. I, you know, I know you're gonna think it's strange, but I agree with you. That, that, when I looked at the, the rate sheet, I know, I hurt you still, but I'm going, wait a minute. They must've been thinking in terms of, there's some added expense for us of going and hooking up with that one-time fee when all, even when the building was empty before you got in there, all we did was turn the water on. There was no... The other question that came to my mind was just a couple of weeks ago when we decided to do water and sewer for, on Capitol Hill, we charged them, did we charge them a one-time fee as well?
We, we did not.
And I wanna be consistent on how we...
I can understand if we were putting in a new system or something like that, but it's, nothing's changed.
Everything's the same.
I agree.
I agree with you.
Joe, did we not charge them because they were a different entity or was it an oversight? Or why, why was the previous...
The, the homeowner?
Yep.
So, I, I went, did some digging, so what I do, so I've never had to do an allocation fee before. So, what I do is I go back and see what the previous permits looked like. I didn't find one for a, a homeowner when I did the, the hookup up on, was it Capitol Hill? Wherever it was. Just recently. I did just dig through the files and I found one from two thousand and seven that we did do, a two-dollar connection fee, which, again, that was my oversight, I, I didn't realize.
Was that a new building?
This was, yeah, nineteen-seater.
Was that...
Okay, so you, I understand it for a new building.
We're getting there. So, um, I, I, I did do, I did do an allocation sheet for Josh Markey. He ended up not doing the building that he was gonna move into, building the building he was gonna move into. So, there would've been a new building and a new fee. But what I did find when I was looking over for the brewery, the little cafe, Mark Guttel? Kinder Way?
Tanger.
Kinder Way, they, they did pay the fee. They, they sent in, same thing, they sent in their engineering study. They said they're gonna use this much water and they, they, they paid it.
That is, this building they're in has always been a restaurant.
Well, it, I mean, I think what, what the problem is, is we shouldn't have charged.
Right, I, even though we tried, we shouldn't have charged the Kinder Way, cause I look at, when Skyline went in, they had to go and put their forest main and everything here. If, if there was some kind of connection charge, I would expect it. That was a new use of line, but I...
If, if they're gonna do this, they're gonna have to do this every time somebody purchases a house in Perry.
Right.
Which is...
And, and, yeah, we're trying to get people, we're trying to get people...
Well, I guess we got, we got somebody who wants to start a business here.
Yeah, we're exactly that.
And you spend a lot of money doing what you've done. They, they made the inside of that building beautiful. I mean, it's really took my time, you gotta go look at it. And, and I, I just feel that this is a charge that should not be putting against the people when everything has already been there.
I agree with Jay completely. My question is, how are you going to equitably, equitably apply that in the future? Because some people have been charged, some people haven't. We need to update this ordinance at least.
You upgrade your ordinance, but you can't hold us against, because mistakes were made in the past, you can't hold us against the people who are trying to get a business started today.
I'm not, I'm just kinda wondering if you need to go back. I think... I think, didn't we, didn't we charge, um, uh, the guy up on Capitol Hill?
No.
With the new garage? Didn't we charge him?
With the new garage?
Up on Robert, above Robert.
The Roberts Farm that goes up in the back?
I thought they drilled well up there.
I don't know. I haven't seen that.
I haven't seen that.
Well, that was a new building, so if they hooked up the water, then they'd, they'd have to pay for it.
Building a new house, that counts. I mean, that's new.
I'm just, I'm just saying, we should clear up on this and do it the same, because it's obvious that we're not, we're not applying it evenly.
Well, I believe it says a new bill, a new, a new, um, hookup.
New connection.
A new connection is what they have to pay the money on.
It never should be for something that's been there, that's for sure. But it, it's a new build, it's a new business, but it's not a new, the, the water is there.
Everything's the same.
The allocation, we're gonna get the money back from water and sewer.
We're gonna pay you a lot.
You're gonna be paying three thousand dollars.
Oh, jeez.
Right, and, and the one-time fee schedule, it could be fixed just by putting the new, which isn't, when it talks about the one-time system fee, all you have to do is add...
So one time, so right now, if, if everybody that has gone in that building has paid this...
Already gets paid every time someone, it just doesn't seem like it's a one-time fee.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna make a motion here.
I was just gonna ask, is there a second?
I'll second it. Go ahead.
Do you need to abate it, or do you just not need to charge it?
Just waive it.
We just waive it.
There's a motion on the floor to, to...
Then waive it, so abate it. I'll make a motion to, to waive it.
Waive it.
And your second is still...
No.
Any other?
What are you waiving?
The fees.
The access, the access fee, the water access fee, I think it's called. Is that what it's called?
It's called a one-time system fee.
Everybody understand what we're doing?
Can you second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Someday we'll be able to get in there if it ever...
It's, we're close.
Yeah, well, you know, what's happening.
If, if they're there working someday and the, the door is open, you really, you just walk in and see the place. It's amazing. I know when we had it, we did a lot of work in there, but these guys have done unbelievable what they've done in there. It's just gorgeous.
Thank you very much, Jay.
You know, I, it's gonna be a nice place to have a beard.
We're close, we're very close. Thank you all very much.
Thanks for coming in.
Just a bar, a little bit.
Because they're making, they're making...
They make sandwiches and things.
Yep, I don't know if they're going to sandwiches and stuff, but I know they're, because they do, I think.
So I was, uh, as a postscript, I was, I called around and, well, I emailed around and got rates from, uh, different towns throughout the state for water and sewer, just to compare ours to theirs. And a lot of towns just sent me their, their schedules, their fee schedule. Uh, one town had a twenty-five dollar per gallon, uh, system fee. Could you imagine? That would just destroy...
Yeah, we, we used to have a really high, um, new rate, you know, connection fee. And we went down to the state rate, which is the two dollar, two dollars again. For, it's two dollars per bedroom is what it amounts to.
When I hooked up my garage, which was a new hookup, I hooked up my garage and hooked up the little shop behind the house. I think that cost me seven hundred dollars. But it was a new hookup. It was a new, it wasn't pre-existing. There was no water here before. So I didn't have a problem paying that, because that's the way the ordinance reads.
That's the way it should, yeah, okay. Grant aid agreement, grant is a aid agreement?
Grant, oh, grant, grant in aid, sorry, grant in aid agreement.
Okay.
Uh, so this is the same, same type of grant that helped us with Scotch Hill. Uh, this grant helps, uh, what they call hydraulically connected sections of road. Um, it helps improve the water runoff on hydraulically connected sections of road, so stormwater can get in the ditches, get through the culverts, and get out into the grass.
Similar to what you did down on Dealey Street.
Um...
Probably apply for something like that, right?
No, that, that pumps it into the river and they don't like that.
No, what I'm saying, but that's what it's, I mean, is to get the water off the road.
Stormwater.
And, and get it out into a location where it's not gonna bother anybody.
Exactly. Um, so we've done this, uh, for the last few years since I've been here, and then it's up again this year if the board is interested. I would just need a motion and a couple of signatures.
What's our, what's our cut?
I'll make a motion to accept the grant in aid agreement. Might be done and passed you.
Second?
Says in here, the grant is for ID for road repairs.
For road, for, yes, for road repairs.
It is a two, eighty-twenty split, so twenty percent of us.
We do in-kind to get that point eighty?
There is some in-kind.
Everybody understand what we're doing?
Is, is there a maximum match? What's the, what kind of dollar?
So they, they're, this grant, this is a funny one, Jeff. It goes through the Regional Planning Commission, and, and, I know. And they ask all the towns to sign up, so we don't, we don't know what the, what the max award is gonna look like or what even our match is gonna look like until after the deadline and they start allocating funds.
It specifically says we can do in-kind.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
All right. Everybody understand what we're doing? Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Did you second that? No.
Carol did.
Sign this?
Yeah, I think so. Looks like there's plenty of lines there. Can't hurt. See if Lyle can, oh, that's not Lyle's deal.
No.
You've got someone on the board now, I thought deep eyes, I had a meeting earlier tonight with them.
I, I did, I don't know if I mentioned, I did talk to Lyle about that Real Bucks program where we didn't get invited.
He forgot.
Yeah, he...
Yeah, so, so much.
He did apologize. He felt really bad. I talked to him on the phone.
Tell him it's all...
It's hard to believe that he forgot about Fairhaven when he used to work here.
It is Reddicks. That's what they do. They come here, once you're here to collect money from us, and then forget. And they forget.
It is now a new organization, the Chamber and Reddick together, yeah?
Right, which makes it even worse, because you think you're getting anything out of Rutland, Rutland City here.
Well, you see in the paper where they went in, they went into the Rutland City Board to get money out of them already.
And, and Rutland City Board is, uh, saying, what are we getting for this?
Well, well, they oughta come here and we can tell them what they, what'd you get here?
Nothing.
Okay, enough ranting. Uh, DPW budget.
Yep. So this is the first go the, the board of selectmen has, and we're starting with the, the big, uh, the big elephant in the room, uh, Public Works.
Overview, you guys wanna give an overview, or you wanna just go line by line? Start acting.
I can, just very briefly, the, is small increases throughout. Um, the, the big, uh, the big increase, which I think we talked about last meeting, is that, uh, request for sixteen thousand five hundred for a new scag for Joe Festa. That's, that's really where your money is.
Have you paid sixteen thousand for that last one?
The last one was a much smaller version.
What's wrong with this one?
The same, same, uh, the list price on that machine is seventeen thousand dollars.
This one, Jay, is, how old is this?
This is two thousand nine with twenty-five, over twenty-five hundred dollars on it.
You know, I got a, I've got a Coggeda that, that I bought in '06, and I've got sixteen hundred miles on it, or sixteen hundred hours on it, and it runs just as good as it did. If you maintain them, they shouldn't, I mean, I think, I think that's a lot of money for a lawnmower. I'm sorry, we don't have to buy a scag. There's other lawnmowers out there. And I think we should start looking around a little bit more. I understand somebody in town sells them, but that's a lot of money for a lawnmower.
So for that much money, it would have to go out to bid? That's, that's true. We wouldn't just buy one. You'd have to bid this one out.
Yeah, but what would the bid say? A scag?
It would match the same horsepower, horsepower, cutting deck arrangement, same, uh, same information that they all would be. It needs to meet this criteria. Needs to be at least as good as this one, if not better.
You're taking the specs off the scag, right?
So I could take specs off of, I could look at the close miles and see where they range out, but I would not go lesser in quality than what we have now. Because I don't believe that, that the same serviceability of a machine of smaller quality, or lesser quality.
They would rather see this, if it has to be rebuilt, and get a couple more years of, we bought a lot of equipment here, and somewhere we gotta stop. We just bought a truck that we didn't need and...
So the mower itself does go around thirty acres that it mows on a constant schedule all summer long. This machine isn't something that, you know, we just want, uh, because we want a new one. The machine and the people I've talked with, the amount of hours we have on it is, there are some parts that we are rolling the dice on, on that machine. They're still serviceable parts, but they cost money. Um, though, over this summer, we had an issue running, and fuel injectors were one of suspected parts. They were three hundred dollars for two injectors, so, I mean...
Three hundred dollars is a long way from sixteen thousand.
But with three hundred dollars in injectors, that's all you've got replaced on the machine. We didn't replace the hydraulic motors on it. We didn't replace the motor or any other corresponding parts.
If there's nothing wrong with them, why do you have to replace them? If everything's working fine, I watched you loop in the park over here yesterday, a hundred miles an hour. Everything seemed to be working fine. I mean...
So the idea is to budget for replacement. Instead of next summer, we blow out the motors on it, and we're out a couple thousand dollars to rebuild it. That, again, wasn't budgeted, because we can't budget for catastrophic, catastrophic failures. The number that's there is to try and be close to where that list price is. Like Joe said, we would have to go to bid, and that is not a final offer on that. Whatever we could take for trade-in value on the one we have, again, we'll cut that cost down. The number's just a budget number there, sit there to make sure that when we go to say, hey, we wanted to buy that new machine, bids came back, they're five thousand more than they budgeted, then it's a definite, we're not gonna be able to buy that. So that's where that number is derived from.
Was there more in the thing, or, just when you were giving a brief summary, I, I think we're gonna go through line item by, by line item. I just, the, and I just upfront, I wanna say, when I, when I looked at this and saw that our Public Works budget had an increase of over ten percent, and last year we had a double-digit increase of Public Works, and we're trying to keep everything at that two-point-six, two-point-seven when we're done. Uh, I, I, I look at this and, and I'm just prefacing that when someone asks questions on each individual line, I'm going, to go from two thousand eighteen with, you know, half, half a million dollars to seven hundred and sixteen thousand, that is a huge, for twenty-six miles of road, that's a huge amount of money. I'm not saying we don't need what's there, but I'd go to preface to say, the, I, I, I'm probably asking questions about these, because that's, that's a lot of, a lot of money.
I haven't done the, the budget process here, but I'm assuming you don't have anything for the what-ifs? I mean, because sometimes businesses do.
I slash every nickel out I can.
And you've looked, you've looked at every single thing you can possibly think reasonable to take out and still come up with the, what is it, ten-point-eight percent increase? I just, ten-point-six. I just wanted to know that before we start doing line by line.
Well, there's a lot of, there's one thing in here I, I put in my papers now, but I think it's right here. The one about Furnace Street. You're telling me you were gonna spend three, almost two-hundred-and-something thousand dollars on Furnace Street?
No. Furnace?
That's what it said in one of your sheets you gave us.
Well, that must have been a typo, Jay. There's no way.
Okay, you said that all that was left was maybe eight thousand dollars for paving.
Oh, that was, that was a paving piece of paper.
Oh, paving? No, no. We, uh, we went back, we got the hard, we got harder numbers from Pike, so I was using the numbers that they provided last year. Harder numbers came in between now and then. Furnace Street.
I mean, all we're doing is grinding and paving.
I think we were talking about putting some, uh...
Probably some dryweld. Are they called drywelds or something like that, that you're not gonna be able to look?
And that's gonna be fifteen, that's about, that's gonna be about fifteen K. Furnace Street's gonna be closer to twenty-two, thirty, thirty-seven thousand.
No, I wish I could find that paper.
And, and there might be, after I made that comment about ten percent, there might be a reason that you went multiple years at two percent and something's being fixed here, but it, it looked a little, looked a little steep, my, my first pass at.
Okay, Furnace Brook's improvements, two-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand, three hundred dollars.
That's a typo.
This, this amount will leave eight thousand dollars for additional paving.
That's for Furnace Street? Are you right?
It says right here.
Okay, then that's, then I typhoned it, Jay. It's, I was wrong. It was a typo. That's not correct.
Talking about adding another fifty thousand dollar article for paving?
Yep, that's true.
It's just crazy. I mean, when, we could have done Furnace Brook last year for eighteen thousand dollars.
Yep, again, it was not my decision to make. The board of selectmen chose not to pave that road last year.
I understand that, but we...
I agree with you.
But you've also got on a sheet here for Grape Street, and that's already been done.
Again, that, oh, that's, that's your original. That Grape Street is not being done this year. It's already been done.
Well, that's what I'm saying. It's just, I think, I think we oughta try to do our paving without an additional fifty thousand dollars this year. We gotta give somebody a break here pretty soon. I mean, we done, Swamp Road was done like seven years ago, eight years ago.
It's been longer than that?
It's, I was, well, I was working for, I still have my truck in Rose, so maybe it was, but the road isn't falling apart. Scotch Hills was shaped in that is. Um, the Fourth Street should be taken care of. We should just take care of the streets we've got here now. Nobody's complaining about them other streets out there. And Fourth Street's a mess, you know, um...
I thought Fourth Street, Fourth Street's on there.
Yeah, now, but, I mean, I'm saying, but now they just wanna shim it. Let's do the job and do it right. I think the only streets we should be looking at this year is Furnace Street and, and Fourth Street. They'll take care of this whole end of town out here. Third Street, we didn't do Third Street.
So, so obviously the board can do what it wants. Um, but last year, the board did request that we pull together a, a paving plan, and we spent a lot of time pulling together a paving plan, and this year we stuck to that plan. A lot of people are, I've had people go out of their way to say, thank you.
I understand that.
If you, if you stop the plan now and say, just do that road, you, the, the rest of the roads won't...
You can't keep asking them every year for an extra fifty thousand dollars. Come on, Joe.
Well, we're asking them, right now, we're asking them for another eighty thousand to start with, and we, we started that last year. If we need the money to do it, what are you gonna do?
I'm saying is an additional fifty thousand dollars on top third of them.
Well, the, the, they have the choice. At least that gives them the choice. We do basics with a hundred and eighty, and then they have the choice of saying yes or no on the, on the extra fifty. I don't think it's a horrible thought.
I think it is. I think we've done it last year. We don't have to do it.
We gotta do it every year. We should be spending...
We're almost caught up.
No.
What do you mean no?
You're nowhere near caught up.
We've done Green Road?
Nope.
What do you mean no?
I mean, you're nowhere near caught up.
The only roads that are left is Scotch Hill, probably Sheldon Road. That's, but, and where else?
Jay, you're, you're, you're yours to caught up. You're five or six years out before you're caught up. And, and it's, again, it's, it's what you wanna do with, with your money. Do, do we wanna have, do we wanna put it into roads or, or not? It's, you know, it's the board's choice. It's just where, where do you wanna spend the money?
We don't maintain the roads. It's not gonna do any good to pave them anyways, so...
Well, that's exactly what I'm saying.
What I'm saying is, we're in the shape we're in because the roads have been maintained.
We can't do anything...
We don't even want to patch a road anymore.
We can't do anything about history. We can do some, we can do something about...
I never saw a patch truck go out at all this year, do any holes anywhere.
Oh.
I don't think that's true, but I'm not here...
We bought a machine, we bought a machine to go forward strictly for patching, and whatever. You won't get my vote for fifty thousand extra, I'll tell you right now.
That's, I mean, again, it's the board's decision. It's where you wanna spend the money. It's, we just present what we feel is best, and then...
When we start line item, my, my very first one, I got a question.
Well, let's, let's do that. Let's do that so we can get... Let's do that so we can get, reach the working document here. All right, I am at O three O Public Works, Public Works Administration.
Could we get an explanation on the O three one O ten, the Public Works Administration salary? That just, it was eight point one percent increase. Just, just, just need to understand. Was, was that the additional road foreman salary or I, I just want to make sure I know what it is?
So that, that's going to include a little bit of Jim's raise as well as Aaron came in at a little higher rate than the previous.
What, what did he come in on? Cause we never heard what this thing was. I never did.
Hey, let me, let me pull up contract.
While you're doing that, is there a, um, a flat annual increase built in for, is it all the same for everybody?
Two point two five.
Yeah, two and a four.
Which, just out of curiosity, the way you're looking that up, speaking of contracts, what do we do for the new year?
Two and a half years? We just finished that.
We just finished.
Last year.
Was it last year? Geez. It seemed like it was a long time ago.
There's over two years left on it.
Yeah, okay. Uh, so new DPW came in at sixty-six five, sixty-six thousand five hundred.
So he raised that, he raised it almost fifteen thousand dollars, right?
Uh, I don't have the previous supers. Let me see if I have his contract.
He came in for fifty-one thousand.
I don't think it was that much, Jay. I'd have to pull, I'd have to go back and look. I don't know what it was. I don't have his old contract in there. I don't think it was, it certainly wasn't fifteen thousand.
Fifty-one thousand. It was fifty-one thousand he came in for.
I. I, I don't think that's right, Jay, but I, I don't have the paperwork in front of me.
Find that out. Moving right along. Other questions on Works Administration?
Nope, that was the only one I had for that one.
Okay, I'm moving down to Summer Work.
Yeah, I have a question on that too. This is just for Summer Work salary, right?
Yes.
Is that the two point two five rate or what is it? It's five, up five percent?
Yep, so we, we have a new, the superintendent, Nate Saxton got a promotion. Jay, we talked about it.
Yeah, and you're, oh boy. We don't need two people in charge for four people. Come on. This is ridiculous.
And what, what did that, what did that mean? Like he went up a step or?
He did, I think it was like three steps.
And then the guy behind him that just came on went up a couple steps because he put them on as he can.
Yeah, he, he got bumped a little bit too.
Yeah, so.
But, but to answer the question, the five percent increase is taking the salaries that, that they have now and add the contract increase, two and a quarter. That's what that five percent is. That's, that's all it was. Okay. Answers what the five percent is. On, are we done with, uh, that first O thirty, that, that ten? Cause ten point one right underneath it, Summer Work overtime? That, that fifteen point six three, even considering the new salaries, that seems high. Can we, little explanation or?
So, so I just, I just rounded that up. Nineteen, twenty nineteen, uh, yeah, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, we saw five thousand eight hundred dollar, uh, actual. Instead of making it five thousand eight hundred and six dollars, I just rounded it up to six thousand.
Eight hundred bucks.
It's, yeah, it's eight hundred bucks. Uh, actuals in the past, you see a six thousand, five thousand a year after that, fifty, fifty-eight hundred after that. It's, it seems to be pretty consistent.
Outside road work that's for paving, correct?
Yes, uh, no, outside, yes, outside road work is paving.
Five thousand dollars on the O three O five one, one zero fifty-six ten, the outside road work. The implementation of the crack seal program, five thousand dollars. It's about where a crack seal company comes in for a day with a crack seal so we can maintain these roads that we have.
What are you going to do this year?
I would have to, I have not had time, sorry, to go out and see where that money would be best spent. But that would be, that's where that is, is to maintain.
So you just wouldn't spend any more than five thousand?
I would probably just shoot for a day's worth. Less any savings realized if we didn't pave all of the remaining money. See if I could use some of that to offset the cost for a little bit more crack seal. But I think crack seal, dollar for dollar is good money spent on, and if we spend it on good pavement, we're maximizing our benefits, so.
We probably have crack seals that the water doesn't seep into the roadway and doesn't, it doesn't freeze in winter time and it doesn't pop the pavement. So.
Can I go back up to twenty-one twenty, the OS paint? Is that, when I looked at that increase there, I'm saying, is that the lacquer crosswalk painting that we're going to actually do some painting and, and catch up and get things back or is that a different paint?
So that's going to go to trying to start using a different product that we're not painting it, you know, at this rate. But by the time it's twenty years trying to keep them there, which we can't do, um, is to go to a different product. So it's more of a permanent solution. So it's, you don't have to see us in that same crosswalk every six months just trying to maintain that white line. We can use a different product that's going to go farther and farther.
That's going to make, okay, it's fine, it's fine.
And now I say we're going to go out next year and you're going to see all the random crosswalks everywhere. We're going to have to piece it together because that number isn't enough to do multiple. That's going to, we're going to try and hit the spots that are always, you know, trying to get to those school areas with a more permanent fixture. So the phone call isn't made all the time. Why aren't the schools zones done? We can make sure those are more permanent and get to the other stuff.
Public Crossing in front of the Marvel else over here. I don't think that's been painted in four years. Right out of the park, goes right straight across to.
Yeah, is there, is there going to be a walk there?
There has been one.
Oh, yeah, it hasn't been here since I've been here either.
Hasn't been painted, so.
What's the, uh, the operating, operation supplies safety? What's that? That's four thousand more.
Four thousand dollars would be a split between, so four thousand dollars would be the highway departments buy into a trench box system. That I know we've discussed, discussed and discussed. Uh, the four thousand dollars would be the highway portion of it. And that would come back due next year for water and sewer line budgets to match that. So we can actually buy the proper ditch box system we need.
I thought we had, I thought we bought.
We have not bought anything other than.
We talked about, we didn't go and buy that lightweight ditch box?
No, and that's what my.
Oh, I thought we did.
He did some job, I think he rented one from Fabian.
We have to run a couple of different ones now.
Okay, well, we, we definitely need to.
Yes.
Okay. In my humble opinion. Anything else on Summer Work? Okay, Winter Work. Going once, going twice.
You know, my two questions are answered. Just send me an answer for this one, Jay.
And most of the overtime for winter work is plowing? You don't really have a, can't do much with that.
No, that's, that's a roll of the dice. Um, Public Works Buildings.
This number that you've got here, does this, um, it certainly doesn't go with what we just passed for the fuel price rate? For the price of fuel that we just decided, we just got.
Yeah, I'm looking at it here, Jay.
You got it in there?
Um, five thousand.
You got an additional five thousand. Oh, no, no.
No, it's just flat out, flat.
We flat funded it. Um, should be a little, it probably will be less. Yeah, I mean, we could, we could, I could take a percentage. I could take a percentage off of what last year's was, well, what we paid last year and what the difference is this year by percentage. And then just take that right off the top of that if the board wants. That'd be a good.
Well, I don't want to, I don't want to shorts because you've got to make sure you keep earning, but. Is this the fuel for the garage down there too?
At Bus Barn.
Huh?
Garage at Bus Barn combined.
Okay, so this is for all three buildings here?
No, for Public Works.
Just Public Works, just five thousand for them?
Yep. Yeah, I could take a percentage off that just to see what it looks like.
It sounds like that's realistic, that number.
Five?
I would take it off. I.
Anything to bring?
Cause there's nothing to bring else to bring down.
Well, except remember it's a year away, right?
Yeah, well, we got the, this, this amount that we're looking at is for, that's right, it's for next year, not this year. So you can't, the only thing you can do is any money that you save this year. Of course, they don't let you.
You can buy ahead.
Yes, you can buy ahead. Um, if you had money left over from this year's budget in July, you could top it off. You know, and get a credit somewhere if you had extra money left over. So I guess you really, there's really. Cause you don't know if you're going to get that price next year.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
This is just for this year. This is for this current heating year.
That's right.
This is true. Yeah.
You leave it?
Yeah.
Leave it?
Yeah, everybody's good with that?
We can look at.
We can, yeah, we can.
You blow the beam again.
Fire truck.
That's not funny. Uh, Public Works Equipment.
Yeah, what's that Public Works Equipment salary?
Mechanist, kind of.
Yeah, that's, that's the mechanic. His time is split up between a couple of different, uh, line items. So he's in Winter Work, Summer Work, and he's the guy that does the equipment.
Isn't, isn't that all based on percentages? Why didn't that go up at all?
Equipment did go up by four point, four point eight four.
No, so. Yeah, but Buildings didn't.
No, it's because Public Works Buildings doesn't, yeah, I took the, I took the increase out of there and shifted it down to Equipment just because we're tending, we're leaning more towards, um, maintaining the equipment with more labor. The Building Salary, we never really touched that. So I just, I just moved his labor down to Equipment. I'm, I'm trying to be as accurate as I can where the time is spent. It is, Public Works is all percentage based on the different line items.
But doesn't this gentleman also plow?
He does.
Can, can you just break out the salaries, Joe? By person and just make sure that the two numbers, when you add up all the salaries, that they equal what we actually pay everybody?
Yes, I, I actually have it sitting in front of me and I can, uh, I can email it to the board.
Yeah, thanks. That would be a little reassuring.
Yeah, so, so the, not, maybe not that it matters, but the average, the average increase across DPW is only two seven nine. Well, you see.
I think that, I think that would answer a lot of people's questions.
All right, yeah. So, so it does look like there's huge increases on some and not on others, but the average is two seven nine. So it's not like there's these huge numbers being ballooned up. It's, DPW labor is always a discussion point.
For the, um, Maintenance Supplies, are we there yet?
Yep, go ahead.
Is there a, a little bit to cut out of there? Because when you look at the actual and the budget, the actual has covered quite a bit less than the budget the past couple of years. And it's up, proposes up another two thousand. So I wonder if you could remove a little bit there.
And also, it's brand new.
What is it?
What's what?
It's twenty-five thousand dollars.
No, no, what is, what is the justification for the increase in the two thousand? They must be thinking about something new.
So the backhoe itself, we just had some work done to that. It needed a new hydraulic pump which controls every movement of the equipment, including the, well, the, all of that stuff. With the back of that, the control valve is leaking rather, not extremely horrible, but it is something that the mechanic, and if you look at it, you can see clear, brand new paint on it because it has, the oil movement on it has washed all the grease away that's been building on it over the years. And to reseal that control valve alone, it's in the realm of five thousand dollars. So the two thousand dollars.
Where are you guys getting this work done? Where are you getting this work done?
From the people that are certified to work on it. So we don't have mistakes made that cost more than.
Well, for that kind of money, you better have real experts working on it. I had a valve body just done on my, my backhoe. Had it re, all rebuilt and it wasn't anywhere near five thousand dollars. But anyways, move on.
Yeah, that's a budgetary number, not a final offering, so don't.
Backhoe isn't used. The only backhoe used for is down the dump.
It's also will be the backup for something with, like a loader or the excavator.
Um, I guess, can we bubble fund that line and, and hopefully find that, uh, out of our normal maintenance?
Yeah, that's, that's actually.
The actual, the, the actual that they used for nineteen twenty was twenty thousand dollars.
Can we go back to twenty-three? See what we can do?
Sure. Is the board wants it at twenty-three?
It would.
So that's.
I was, I was asking a question.
So that's going to be a four thousand dollar difference there. Correct?
No, two thousand.
No, it'd be two thousand.
Two thousand.
Two thousand, but we'll take, take it where you can get it.
Okay. Uh, da, 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 da. Okay. Um, we're, we're still in a Public Works Equipment, right? Is that the same? That's where we get into discussion of the, the lawnmower.
That was the lawnmower, the sixteen thousand.
Yeah.
There was three thousand in that the year before. What did we, what do we usually buy of that line that we aren't buying this year?
Well, what did we spend the twenty thousand on for nineteen twenty?
No, never mind, never mind.
That, that was.
But, but to your point, we, we seem to go couple thousand, couple thousand, seven thousand, couple thousand, twenty thousand. And then back up again to, to twenty thousand basically. And we're just going, wait a minute, folks. You think, uh, did we let everything go so bad that we got to buy new all over the place and is there?
No, I think, I think there are some fairly big ticket items that they're trying to plan purchases for, but, um, I'm just, just wondering if there's any of the initial three thousand that maybe we could back down.
Right.
I understand. Oh. What was the twenty thousand spent on?
That, so that, there was a plasma cutter purchased, a new welder, tanks for the, uh, salt, the brine, even though that's supposed to call it brine. There was, there was a bunch of small things that we just, things were just.
The tanks for the brine weren't small though. The tanks for the brine weren't small. That was like a ten thousand dollar thing.
Yeah, that, yeah.
Well, no, we didn't budget.
And we don't need.
Good question. Where did the money come from?
It's, so DPW budget was sixty thousand dollars over budget last year.
Last year, two years ago.
Last year.
Last year. I'm not for a new lawnmower, but that's just me.
Can we, and I think the question is, instead of the nineteen five, can we take?
Can we just do like seventeen?
Seventeen, sixteen. Seventeen, sixteen, can we take a challenge on, get it, get something there and, and let's see. And if it comes back and, and it's a, it looks like a bad decision, we'll talk about where, well, we've got money, but I just think it would help us.
So that, this list price, that sixty-five would be close to that list price. And that's what we're adding to, like you said, the three thousand dollars as it is. And then we would realize the savings of going out to bid, as well as whatever we can get in trade on that. So that number, like I said, was just there for informational purposes of if we say yes, we're going to buy this. And for some reason, everyone says municipalities are going to pay less from here on out just because we can actually do this project.
What would it take, I, you know what I'd like to hear is what it, what it would take to get a year or two more out of that machine? In the meantime, take some money and add it to the reserve account.
Put some money aside.
Was the, was the scag in the, in the capital replacement plan at all?
No, the scags were not in the plan.
Because it's too small?
Um.
Fifteen thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's not small. No, Jeff, to be honest with you, I, I don't know why. It was an oversight.
Well.
Because that seems to be the pitfall with all of our capital replacement plans is we always have an oversight. And that is not a comment on you, Aaron, you were not here. For laughter.
I was here.
Thank you, I have to go along.
Yeah, I mean, I can, please.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
I think we take, I think you put some money aside to rebuild this, or whatever they got to do to it, it needs.
Is, the way I read the budget, there's no money going to Public Works capital replacement currently.
At this point, yeah. It, so it, you know, we take it out of this line and we put it in another one, it's begging.
It's still there.
But, it's, it's a little less, it's a little less of a hit if we can get it. I, I think the question is, realistically, what would it cost to re, to, to make this thing go a couple more years?
I would not have a realistic number for you because if it goes all the way through, you know, you're going to, I would have looked like an idiot because I told you I needed a new one, but it did break. Or if everything goes crap, then we're five thousand.
I, I, what I need from you all the time is the best, the best possible result for all the equipment we got. And, and two options, new and rebuilt. You know, every time. It, it's the only way we can make, you know, we're not there, we're not on site, we don't know what the machine looks like. We don't know what the maintenance has been. Well, we, we can guess what the maintenance has been like. It, you guys, between Sam and you, it's been better. I'll give you that, you know, but we need, we need to, you know, we're still playing catch up.
My apologies for not having that information.
I've said.
Well, I don't expect you to, coming off the top of your head, I, I expect you to give me some time.
Apologies.
No, no, no.
I've sat on this board for almost fourteen years, and if you put money in there like this here, you're putting in, maybe we'll buy a lawnmower, maybe we won't. If the money's in there, they're going to buy one.
Well, that's natural.
That's natural. Past that history, and I just.
Yeah, I, I think, I think we try to get a couple of years out of it, see what you can do. And, you know, you come back to me and, and tell me that there's just no way, I'm going to, I'm going to trust you, but I, I, you know, having the only option of buying new every time isn't an option. There, it, it isn't, doesn't inspire trust, let's put it that way. So, I, and I don't, I'm not saying that you're trying to pull the wool over our eyes and just saying that's, it's a simple way to go, but sometimes we gotta, we gotta, we gotta do the austerity. Now, this isn't, this isn't the school budget.
You know, just like the trucks. They'll come in here and say, the trucks are no good, they can't be used anymore, they're, they're, you just can't be repaired. We sell the truck to somebody and they rent the truck for three, four years. You know, it just, I understand it's emergency equipment, but when the truck's only got thirty-five, forty thousand miles on it, it can't be worn out.
And I, I, I just think that those are the options. We should have those options. And you can make your, make your pitch for either one or both, or, or always new or whatever. But, at least we have an option.
So what are we recommending changing that number to? That's only part of the discussion I have.
Well, I, you know, come to a, I'm saying, at this point, leave it there like this. Leave it, leave it like here, the placeholder. We're not anywhere near the end of this thing. But assume that we're going to put something in the, uh, reserve account for the next two years or three years or whatever. And, and at that point, we pull this out, but we're going to, we gotta, we gotta hear from Aaron whether or not, whether or not we're yet.
We'll come back and revisit that.
Yeah.
No, okay.
So let's put a, let's, let's put a placeholder in there of four thousand, Bob, and.
Exactly. I want to see what the numbers look like before.
Okay.
I was, I was going to suggest six thousand, just in case there is a breakdown in the lawnmower.
Six thousand?
Six thousand. Instead of nineteen, you make that six.
It looks a lot better than nineteen, that's for sure.
Because I'd want to see what the numbers look like, and you can come back and tell us if we can't do it to six, but.
So.
And then what can I, what can I plug into Public Works vehicles? Can I put, can I put, uh, like five over there for placeholder?
Yeah, and then that, that gets, yeah, why not? You know.
We're still going to save eight thousand dollars.
Yeah, and.
So I just conference with Aaron.
Okay.
We're going to get, we're, we're going to get, oh yeah, we're going to get another year or two out of that, so I'm going to propose to just whack that sixteen five right out of there.
Well, we'll, we'll go down to six, just for, because of.
If you got the six or something breaks, you got the money to do it.
Well, but you have the three thousand if something breaks, right?
Yeah.
Just whack it out and put two.
I mean, yeah, I mean, if, if the board's gonna, would like to put money into, to buy one in a couple of years, I mean, I, I hate to take tax money if we don't use it.
Three, three there and three into the equipment reserve, I could.
So put three and let's put eight thousand over in the reserve.
Yeah, I get that, that, and then, then you're halfway to a new machine.
Yeah.
Right.
So we're, we're going to flat fund machinery and equipment at three thousand.
That's correct.
Okay. Starting to learn the politics of this. You're starting to learn the politics of this.
Well, if you're, so the way I see it again, i- if we're not going to, if we're not going to get the new one, drop in just a couple extra thousand in, I, I always hate to say, well, just put some money in there. Because I don't know if it's going to be used, and I don't want to take tax money.
And we can always pull a little bit out of the reserve if we have a large repair on it.
Yeah, exactly, so it's, you know, I'd rather have people have their money than have us have their money, that's for sure.
Okay, let's move on. Um, hydrant replacement, doesn't seem to be a whole bu, whole bunch of change there. How many did we replace this year? Or did we? Do you know?
My knowledge, none.
Okay, debt management is up.
Yep, that reflects the pickup truck we bought a few months back.
What pickup?
What was it?
The Chevy.
The Chevy.
The one for the, you mean the one for the water sewer?
No, the Cavitachi, the thirty-five hundred.
Thirty-five hundred.
Well, that's the one we didn't need, you mean?
Yes. That interest, so that interest might change. That reflects a, a reduction of interest from other debt. Um, I have to get the, the rate from the bank once that comes in, so that, that number might go up just a little bit.
Anything else?
Well, just a quick glance here. Nineteen twenty, our actual budget was nineteen thousand four hundred. And we're up to fifty, fifty-four thousand dollars now on payments on the equipment.
Wait, wait, say that again?
We're up to fifty-four thousand dollars from, I'm going to open this back up again.
Nineteen thousand four.
Nineteen four.
Nineteen four.
Yeah, so. Like, like the paving plan, we were, we were asked to produce the capital budget.
Pushed till it was almost dead and we went out and now we have to replace it all happen at the same time.
Yeah, and, and I know it's, I know it's expensive right now, but we did pull together a, a plan that we thought would be good for the next five to seven years. And it's hard, and you guys have done a great job funding this. It will get better as the years go on because we can get trade-ins and we won't have to take on that much debt.
Right.
If you stop halfway through though, you're going to be in the same spot. We are going to be in the same spot we were just six years ago.
Not if there's maintenance done on this stuff. There hasn't been maintenance done on this equipment ever. It just barely started having maintenance done. There was trucks that hadn't been greased for Christ sakes for eight months.
It's awful, I agree.
I bought one, and I had to change every grease fitting on the truck because it hadn't ever been touched.
Could I, I'm just curious, with the changes we made, ballpark, what did we, what did we do to that amount?
I've got it at, I've got it at seven point eight. What do you guys got?
I, I was, I didn't do the spreadsheet, but yeah, I, I did the math earlier anticipating a, a, a lawnmower removal, and it was about eight percent.
I'm, I'm seven point eight. I made the changes.
Okay, so there you go.
There you go. Thanks, Jeff. That's, that's a question.
Jeff, what's the, what's your total? Now, see, this is what.
Six hundred ninety-eight thousand, three hundred seventy-eight dollars.
No, no, what's the, what's the total overall? It should be down below that number.
Uh, with general and, and BW or with appropriations?
Uh, both.
Two point four two, general, and two point one seven with appropriations.
That is a.
And that includes the extra eight thousand in the reserve.
Okay, I was going to ask that. Wow. Yeah. Wouldn't be nice if we didn't have to do this too hard.
Yes, yes it would.
But, okay, that is, that concludes this for tonight. Correct? So far, so good.
Joe, do you want me to email this to you tonight?
Um.
Or you got the notes anyway.
Yeah, I, I take notes, but yeah, if you want to send it over, that would be nice. Thanks, Joe.
Yep.
All I got to do is find my agenda. I buried that.
I don't mind.
I have to borrow one. It's in here someplace, I'm sure. Holy God, you're a good note taker.
I don't know, I, I have four minutes.
Okay, uh, so we're actually into the parking lot. Is there anything anybody needs to talk about there?
Uh, like I had mentioned before, abatement policy should be in there when I made the copy and paste that, uh, I copied the wrong one. So I'm going to put abatement po, uh, sewer abatement policy back in there.
Um, have you heard anything from our friends up at, uh, Jake LeBate's place?
I, um, I did get this interesting letter from the young lady that lives on the end of the road. Um.
Yeah, I know who you mean.
Yeah, I, other than that, no, nobody's been radio silent.
She was going through Murphy Demare.
Here, that's good. I found it. She was going through Murphy Demare.
Yeah, she had, wants Murphy Demare to send a letter to her.
Oh.
That's what I was told.
Well, I suppose that's. I'd like not to, uh, involve Murphy in any of the hard decisions. I want everybody to like Murphy. Making some money there. Um, anything else in the parking lot?
No.
Um, round table? Carol? Jay?
The only thing I had was the manholes, and I already spoke to them about it, and, oh, there is one thing. Could you have the police, or maybe Aaron can do it, on Mechanic Street, they've got a basketball hoop sticking out in the road. Couple of the buses have hit the hoop with their mirrors.
Oh.
The hoop itself is right over the road, and I think it's kind of a, I think it's kind of a hazard.
Yeah, the buses are hitting, sure.
So, you know, just have a look at, see, all they got to do is move it back a foot, you know, and get it back out the road a little bit. That's all, that's all I got.
I, uh, about the manholes, I did stop over at, uh, Mr. Pankowski's place and nobody was home. I was just curious if it was.
That's quieter down here.
Uh, well, she was saying it wasn't noise, but it was shaking her house, so I was just curious if it helped or not.
Well, if the whole, if they fill the top of them in, it's not, it's going to stop the shaking, because that's where you get your, when they pound on them, that's where you get your, your vibrations.
I, I only had one item, and that was, after our experience with the lines freezing and at the playground restroom here, just wanted a heads up that we, we don't want that to happen two years in a row, and I'd rather just mention something to make sure it doesn't happen two years in a row.
Was the airport, was water turned on at the airport this year?
I don't think we turned it on.
Okay, so the only thing they really got to drain is just the fountain and the, the bathrooms, right?
Cedar Grove Cemetery.
Cedar Grove Cemetery, that's right, yep.
That's all I have.
Um, I would just, if, if anybody gets a chance, take a ride down to, down to Adams Street and take a look there so you can form your own opinion. Um, the guy, the guy's telling me that he, he's, he's trying, but not. My opinion is that he didn't try as much as he said he tried.
I don't think so, Bob. I, I mean, I, I didn't get on this week, but I tried to make a pass at least one pen of junk.
He's been fined, he's got a, he's got another five hundred, five hundred dollar fine would get me motivated. This is at least the second one, and you're saying there's more than that?
There's, this is three or four at this point. He was, he was thousands.
What you think though, if it's, even if he's got three fines, you know, you could get some, some dumpsters in here and get rid of that stuff pretty quick, you know what I'm saying?
At least one for fifteen hundred dollars, I'd rather have, that'd be a lot more positive. Yeah, he's, he's got another one. The chief served another one on him last week. And, uh, he's, you know, go ahead and take a look if you want, I, I.
I, I drive by. I'd like, not every week, but I take.
I look too.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not good. I mean.
They've taken care of the dog problem, all right? That's, that's.
Yeah, I haven't heard anything about the dog since.
They've been pretty quiet, and I think one of the dogs left. I think that went, um, someplace else. It wasn't his to begin with or something.
And, and again, we're not trying to be grumpy neighbors, but it's not fair to the neighbors of these folks.
His neighbors, I'll tell you what, I'd, I'd be some grumpy if I was living next door.
Think about if a neighbor wanted to try to sell her house.
I would be furious. I, right there with.
I mean, and that's while we're on about selling. How are we making out on, uh, green property, greener property? That all taken care of, that's all gone through?
Yep, that's all, uh, that's all set. We put the ad in the paper. Uh, we got to be coming up on time. The November eleventh, I think, is our, our closing date. Yeah, but that's, that's still moving forward.
Good, good.
Um, okay, uh, do you have anything, Jeff, for round table?
Yes.
Uh, no, I'm good.
Okay, you want to do the financials?
I actually don't have those financial reports today.
Oh, Jenny wasn't, Jenny not here, so she didn't mail them.
And I didn't.
Sorry, Jeff, I didn't bring them up to you.
I have warrants, I don't have the checkbook status.
I don't have the checkbook status either.
I'll get it.
I apologize, guys.
No, let's meet, Jeff.
Later.
Okay, I got it. You ready?
Okay.
And, and again, this is what we talked about earlier. Jeff, I don't think you were on the line. Uh, checkbook status is a negative two hundred seventy-five thousand, two hundred sixty dollars and thirty-four cents.
Well, I'm glad I didn't have to read that.
Yeah, no, I'm.
But you say that's not.
That's not, that's not a real number. When Jenny gets back, she'll shift the money back into the account where it should be. Taxes and water bill are coming in.
What, when is she coming back?
Oh, hopefully soon, at the end of this month.
Is she okay? She sounds sickish.
She's okay.
Okay.
So nobody else can transfer this money, so this checkbook doesn't look like this?
It's, it's, I'll see if the treasurer can make some adjustments.
Hey, good luck with that.
So are you looking for a motion to make the pay warrants for the thirty thousand?
Yeah, then we need the other two.
For, uh, so I'll make a motion to do the pay warrants for thirty thousand, four hundred and twelve dollars and seventy-five cents?
We're not payroll.
Payroll. Payroll.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those are opposed.
So the next one is I'll make a motion for the warrants for three hundred fifty-three thousand and five hundred and five dollars and eighty cents. That includes a couple big pains.
Pay, the paving, um, there's two big ones in there, paving and something else.
Casella, was it, was it a casella one?
Could've been casella.
Casella's is eleven, um, Aldrich and Elliott was thirty-two thousand, Pike paving was two hundred and thirty-six thousand, and sand was ten thousand. Was there a second I didn't hear?
I think I, I don't know, but I second, I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, and that would be, um, before we spend all that money, we better get our checkbook in order.
Yeah.
So are we ready for the-
Yeah, cause if that's the case, we're gonna be six hundred and something.
So we have, um, an executive session?
Yep, I'll make the motion to move an executive session for civil litigation discussion on one DSA three thirteen A one.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.